Smithfield Town Council Meeting, July 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you start us with the clerk for in the place, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Christopher, Mrs. O'Hara, Mr. Punchak, Ms. Howes.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Here. Did anyone wish to sign up for Open Forum? Anyone wish to sign up? Last chance. Okay. So we're going to skip Open Forum, pursue it to forty-two dash forty-six dash D with no one wanting to speak. The next item is presentation by Freedom Energy Logistics.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Bart Prometh, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Freedom Energy Logistics. And thank you to the Town Council and Mr. Gibbs, the Town Administrator, for having me tonight to speak to you on our Community Choice Aggregation Program. I do have a presentation behind me, but I kind of like to speak on the program, give a little bit of a background, and then you can use that if it inspires any questions or thoughts or comments you'd like to bring up at the end. So. Community Choice Aggregation, in a nutshell, is an aggregated buying group that consists of all ratepayers within a community that are on default service or last resort service with Rhode Island Energy. The program was instituted about three or four years ago by the Rhode Island Legislature in order to find out ways that they could bring the benefits of electric deregulation to the smaller rate classes. A lot of the larger ratepayers in the state of Rhode Island have been making use and taking benefit from electricity choice since this state was deregulated back in nineteen ninety-nine, saving significant amount of money versus the default option with Rhode Island Energy. Rhode Island Energy just filed their winter rates coming up to start in October, and they're going from ten cents to fourteen point seven cents per kilowatt hour. What this program seeks to do is to enable you, as the Town Council, as the local governing body, to form this buying group to buy collectively on behalf of all those ratepayers. The benefits of this are heightened consumer protections, lower rates, budget stability. One of the things that we face here in Rhode Island every six months is we see some pretty massive fluctuations, again, in our energy rates, where we're seeing an increase now of almost fifty percent come October. People look at their bill come October and they say, geez, my electricity usage hasn't changed. How come my bill's gone up by so much? One of the things that this program helps to rectify is that. And since we're not a regulated entity, through these buying groups, we can go out for procurement at any point in time. So I don't know if the community itself, North Smithfield, purchases from a third-party supplier. Most communities in Rhode Island do, and they've been taking advantage of this. And again, this is an opportunity to perhaps bring ten, fifteen, twenty percent savings on the electricity bill to your residents. There's about seven communities that do this in the state of Rhode Island, and active community choice aggregation programs. We're about to launch the town of Westerly this November. And, you know, in terms of overall, this has been around since about two thousand and ten in New England. A hundred and eighty-four communities in the state of Massachusetts participate in active community choice aggregation programs. And the Rhode Island program is largely modeled off of the success that our friends in, to the north of us, have had. New Hampshire also just launched their programs about two years ago. They have a few communities that are active. And like I said, I'd like to see if there's any interest in continuing the conversation or asking any questions here in North Smithfield. One thing I do want to point out to you is the program is an opt-out program. That's really the biggest sticking point. The community enters into a third-party supply contract with us as your consultants. We do a bid with the suppliers that participate in this program. And then, once a supplier is chosen, opt-out notices are sent to anybody in the community that's on Rhode Island Energy for default service. And they have thirty days to opt out. That's typically a sticking point, so I just wanted to raise it because there can be some concerns from citizens saying, you know, who is the town to choose who we select for our third-party electricity supplier? Nothing changes in terms of the behaviors, so you still get the same bill from Rhode Island Energy, but instead of electricity charge, it'll say North Smithfield aggregation charge. If there's an issue with the power or your meter, anything remotely relating to electricity, you still call the utility company, so that that behavior doesn't change, that relationship doesn't change with Rhode Island Energy. All we seek to do is just replace the Rhode Island Energy last resort service charge with your aggregated buying group charge. And again, we've had, you know, a significant amount of success doing this in the New England marketplace, and we'd like to see if there's an opportunity to bring this to the residents of North Smithfield.
So when you say last resort charge, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. So when we first deregulated electricity purchasing back in nineteen ninety-nine here in Rhode Island, the thought process was, well, now that there's choice in the state, everyone's going to choose their own private supplier for their electricity charges. And so they said, well, geez, there might be some people that are traveling or they have bad credit, so we're going to force the utility company to provide a last resort service for anybody that hasn't made an affirmative decision to move on. Now, you fast forward twenty-five years, and about ninety percent of our commercial industrial customers here in Rhode Island have moved on to a private supplier. But only twenty percent of residential customers have moved on to private supplier. And that's typically because of the fact that there's a lot of gimmicks and nefarious practices in the residential marketplace. You know, your home isn't a large user, so you can't negotiate your own contracts. Sometimes they'll offer you an Amex gift card or some sort of a special teaser rate. You stop paying attention after three or four months, and your rate goes up well above the Rhode Island Energy rate. So over time, there just hasn't been any movement into the third-party private marketplace in the residential sector and the small commercial sector like there has in the commercial industrial sector on the larger end. So this seeks to kind of pull everybody together to make one large buyer so that we have a negotiating capability to get good deals at fair prices and fair terms for the ratepayers in a given community.
So you said everyone in the town would need to join, or they would have their choice as to?
They can leave at any time, but anybody that's on last resort service, which is going to be about eighty percent of your residents, anybody that's on last resort service with Rhode Island Energy, they would be sent an opt-out notice. They'd have thirty days after receiving that opt-out notice, and they have all the details, what the aggregation rate is, what the rate to compare from Rhode Island Energy is. If they don't opt out after thirty days, they're swept into the program, but they can leave at any time. There's no early termination fee, so if someone's traveling in Florida, visiting their grandkids, they come back and they say, what's this program? I want to go back to the utility. Then they would be able to do that at any point in time, regardless of the duration of the agreement that the town has in place with their supplier. Anybody in the community that's already chosen a third-party supplier, that twenty percent of residents I mentioned, or any commercial industrial users, they would be unaffected by this program. It doesn't impact anybody that's already made a choice to go with a different vendor. It's only those folks that are on that last resort service with Rhode Island Energy.
Anyone have any questions?
Why Freedom Energy Logistics?
There's only two companies that are offering this program in Rhode Island right now. There's us and Good Energy. Good Energy, for whatever reason, has simply stopped marketing the program after they signed up Providence, Newport, Portsmouth, Middletown, and I believe North Kingston. We simply saw an opportunity with all the aggregations that we have up in New Hampshire. And Westerly down here in Rhode Island, we're very big in municipal space. We have about a hundred and fifty clients for municipalities throughout the Northeast, and it was kind of a natural progression for us to get into aggregation. And so we saw a need. I live here in Rhode Island and decided to, you know, start going around. So I've probably talked to about fifteen or sixteen communities so far, just in the last four or five months, drumming up interest for this.
And I'm sorry, how many towns or cities in Rhode Island do this?
There are eight communities, including Westerly, which is going to launch in November. And Westerly is our client, which we won through an RFP process.
So is that your only client in Rhode Island? All the others are Good Energy?
The other ones are Good Energy. That's correct. Yep.
I think the only thing that I would like to understand, which my interest is piqued, for sure, change management, right? So if we were to move forward with Freedom Energy Logistics, what does the change management look like for our residents? Meaning, what sort of change will they actually see? And I know that you're saying that the bill will read something different, but it's also to who are we calling if there's any questions about bills? So just a better understanding how those processes will work, so we could proactively communicate to residents.
Great question. So as part of the process, there's a public hearing before the opt-out notice goes out. There's a hearing that we have to have when we're forming your aggregation plan. So if there's local newspapers, social media that you put that on, we help by developing a website specific to North Smithfield that has all contact information that gets routed to our customer service groups. We're a forty-five-person shop, and so we have the resources to handle any manner of customer service issue that a resident might come across. We also put together materials that you put together in the Town Hall, pamphlets, reference materials that folks have. But we want to make sure it's as turnkey as possible, so you're not using town resources to field these questions and issues that inevitably arise when you're serving a customer base of this size. So, you know, outside of the emails, the eight-hundred numbers, the instant chat that we have online, again, we also offer assistance with marketing, social media for the town, but we try to route everything so it comes to us. Initially, it doesn't work that way in terms of you won't field any questions at the town offices and get some phone calls. It's going to happen, but over time, you're going to see that as people get used to the program, there's a huge move to using us as the vendor to field those, so they get comfortable with it. It's also a budget-neutral program, so there's no resources that the town expends to hire Freedom Energy Logistics to come in. We get paid a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour that gets built in to the electricity charge that the town pays. Let's say that we negotiate a nine-cent rate for North Smithfield, and the rate to compare is fourteen cents from Rhode Island Energy. Our rate, or the North Smithfield rate inclusive of our fee, would be nine point one cents per kilowatt hour, and that's how we get paid. We also do all of the regulatory and compliance work for the town, so let's say that we move forward with an aggregation plan. We submit that to the Public Utilities Commission. We act as the guide throughout that entire process. We prepare all the materials such that, again, you're not having to look to utilize a significant amount of Mr. Gibbs' time or your city solicitor. We handle that turnkey for the community.
Thank you.
So, I like what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I couldn't support it, and I'm going to tell you why.
Sure.
I don't like the opt-out, okay? I'd rather they opt in.
Yeah.
I don't like telling somebody that, because although we'd like to all think that everybody in town's watching us right now.
Sure.
Very few people are watching us right now.
Sure.
Okay, most people just go about their lives. Some people, some people don't even know who's on the Town Council.
Right.
Okay. So it wouldn't be fair to tell people, to make people all of a sudden be part of a program unless they're paying attention and they opt out. If you can come up with a way to opt in, I could support that. But I'm not going to support having people just be part of a program because they missed a pamphlet or they missed a video or they missed some kind of notification. Now, all of a sudden, they're in a program that they didn't really sign up for.
Certainly. And I get that. And again, this is not a program that's for every community, and that is the number-one pushback that we get in terms of why a community might not move forward. I visited your neighbors in Burlville about two months ago, and they practically ran me out of town after I told them about the opt-out. Not uncommon to hear that pushback.
Could you come up with a way to opt in? That could be, change your, that could change your whole business model.
Sure. Yeah, certainly. The reason that we don't do the opt-in, we've actually had opt-in aggregation in Rhode Island for twenty-five years. The minute we deregulated, that was a keystone of the initial deregulating legislation. The problem with the opt-in mechanism is that the cost per customer acquisition is about a hundred and fifty dollars per customer acquired. And so with the aggregation program, it was a more efficient tool to go and pass that hundred and fifty dollars per customer back to the ratepayer rather than build it into the rates. And so that's where that program historically broke down. And again, I hear it all the time, and it's a very valid concern, and there will be complaints from residents saying, you know, who is the Town Council to tell me to move forward with this?
Right.
The one thing that I've had some success in pointing out to residents that do have that complaint, and I do speak to a lot of residents on this, and maybe this will resonate with the Town Council, is the fact that when you move to North Smithfield, no one gives you a choice in terms of last resort service with Rhode Island Energy. You're just assumed into that program until you opt out of that by switching to a third-party supplier. So the mechanism is really supposed to switch out North Smithfield for that Rhode Island Energy relationship that's been in place for years, so that you become the default alternative with your program versus Rhode Island Energy. So that would be my only argument, kind of, you know, counter to that, to have, maybe, think about, you're not really making an affirmative choice to join Rhode Island Energy, you're just being placed there. So this would take the spot of that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
By joining this program, what are the, what are the average savings that, for instance, Wesley, I don't know if you can tell us what they're paying, but like what is the guaranteed or perspective that residents should be seeing?
Sure. It's a, it's a great question. So historically, it's all over the map, and I'll give you an example. Back when we had the war on Ukraine breakout in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we saw a significant escalation in energy rates throughout New England. We went all the way up to seventeen cents a kilowatt hour here in Rhode Island, but we went to thirty-six cents a kilowatt hour in Massachusetts. So aggregations like Boston, Springfield, Lowell, they were paying about nine, ten cents a kilowatt hour. So outsized savings from that perspective that I don't think we can look to and say that that's going to happen again. It's kind of a black swan event. I think a more modest, in terms of expectation for savings, is probably in the ten percent arena. That's what we expect to launch with, with Westerly, coming up in November. Against almost a fifteen-cent, fourteen point seven seven rate, we expect to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten cents per kilowatt hour. But that's the winter rate. We expect the rate that's going to be published for March to come down, as it does for the summer rates. So what you're going to see with this program is outsized savings during the winter months, and then Rhode Island Energy is going to catch up to us and make up some ground typically in the summer months. Sometimes we're neck and neck, sometimes they can be slightly below where we are. But in the aggregate, the overall savings, when you look at their average rate versus our average rate, we do quite well, and that's where the ten percent expectation can come into play.
So your, your rate that you quote isn't, isn't seasonality like?
Correct. Yeah. So our competitor, Good Energy, does that with their program, and they do it every six months. The problem with that program is you still have the budgetary volatility. So this past winter, when we were at sixteen point five cents, Good Energy was only at sixteen point two cents. And at that rate, you know, you're not even talking about like a cup of coffee that someone can save. So customers, you know, they pick up their bill, then going into, I guess, the March reads, they went down to ten point seven cents for Rhode Island Energy. They were ten point five for Good Energy. So they're still seeing that budget volatility, and that's a big issue, especially for the folks that you have in town that are on fixed income. Again, to my point earlier, when someone's paying attention to their power bills, they're saying, well, geez, I didn't use any more power in October than I did in September, but my bill went up fifty percent. That's a real benefit to our program. And so, once we get some maturity behind it, I would even argue that the residents keep on coming back and stay with the program because it has that flattened budget certainty that they really like and appreciate, and that becomes almost more important than what the savings are at any given point in time. Rhode Island Energy is regulated, so they have to go out every six months by law in terms of their procurements. We don't have to do that. So if there was an advantageous opening in the marketplace, and the town said, we'd like to lock in for three years at this rate consistently, you'd have that ability. A lot of our aggregations, when they launch, they only do like a twelve-month to start, just to get their feet wet and not go too long-term, but it's an option that the town has, and I think it's a, it's a vehicle that, you know, has our retention rates up around ninety to ninety-two percent in terms of folks that stay in the program post-opt-out for years to come. So.
So now, Good Energy, you said they have all the other municipalities, or are they still in business and they're just not promoting?
They're still in business. They're still serving those communities. They just made a decision to, you know, not press forward any further in the state of Rhode Island for whatever reason. So they haven't added a new community in about two years at this point in time. And like I said, it was just, you know, a market that was available and rich with opportunity, but for whatever reason, they opted not to push forward. It's still worth potentially communicating with them and having them come to talk to you as well. It's just they haven't been very active in pursuing new clientele in the marketplace.
So now, is there any, if someone was to start the program and then they leave the program and go back to Rhode Island Energy, do they, would their rate be changed at all because they're now, they're a new customer again to Rhode Island Energy? Is that matter?
Yeah, they would just go back to the last resort service, as if nothing happened.
It doesn't affect their rate?
Yeah, it doesn't affect their rate or their relationship with the utility. The utility doesn't make any money off of the sale of kilowatt, kilowatt hours on the grid. They make money off of maintenance of the lines and delivery of electrons, but per law, it's not a profit center for them in terms of sale of electrons. So they're indifferent in terms of whether you put them on last resort service or if you're buying through a community choice aggregation or a third-party supplier.
Anyone have any other questions? So obviously, Mr. Gibbs, you brought them here to, or maybe Tony brought here to have the conversation. So obviously, the, the town is, is something we're interested, or it sounds like it might be something to pursue a little bit to find out more information.
Well, the reason for bringing them in is it's always good for us to understand what the options are, ways that we can create value for our residents. As you know, the town already participates in a program through power options, both for electric and gas purchases. That's for the municipality only. In the organization I used to run, we constantly, on our own, were around and chased energy. We talked about the possibility of doing that for all the companies in the park, but we found out that companies like CVS don't need us. They have enough leverage. But I just felt that what he's, what he is proposing is in line with what we're already doing as a municipality, and therefore, we didn't have, there was no risk in being educated on this and thinking about it.
Yeah, I really wasn't even aware that residents could go to a third-party. I thought it was just businesses.
Yeah.
That's, that's interesting. So it'd be, I think it'd be a great idea to get more information.
Okay, great.
I mean, maybe we can send this out in the newsletter just to get some residents interested.
We'll circle back. We'll talk a little bit.
Okay.
And there's no problems in educating. I guess one question I have is, is there a threshold? I mean, you, you talk about why you have the opt-in versus the opt-out, and it's all about client acquisition cost.
Yeah.
Is there a threshold that you guys try to achieve in terms of percentage of a town participation and make this really a lucrative option for you?
Yeah, so the, the third-party suppliers, we get a lot of bids from, from large suppliers like BP, Constellation, Nextera will bid on these programs, and they assume the risk in terms of the opt-out percentage. So they'll typically assume, based upon the markets, about an eighty-five to ninety-five percent retention rate of customers that join. If it falls below that for whatever reason, the town is held harmless. It doesn't impact anybody's rates. Once that contract's secured, that contract stays at that price for the duration of the agreement. The supplier takes on that risk, so if there is some mark-to-market exposure because they have degradation of the overall load, they eat that loss as part of it. But they're pretty comfortable, given the number of aggregations that they've worked with and how many have been out there for over a decade to take on that risk.
We'll talk a little bit more. I can come back to you.
How long is the usual contract with, like, Constellation or someone? Is it like a three-year? Is it?
It depends. It's, it's, you know, it all depends on what the market's doing at the time. So for instance, if we had been looking for pricing back in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, we'd recommend as your advisors to go shorter term because it was an elevated market. During COVID, when we had the lockdowns, you know, we know the municipality's going to be here, you know, businesses might, but we know North Smithfield's going to be here. We would recommend going for the longest term possible because rates were so low, thirty-five-year lows at that point in time. In this market, there's a lot of uncertainty right now. So just taking a look and analyzing, I'm sure Wesley- So just taking a look and analyzing, I'm sure Westerly will probably only go 12 maximum, maybe 24 months, but we do have options, and that's part of our role in this process, is to, to look at where the market's been, where we think it's going, and make our recommendations, and that tailors to what, what your community goals are and what you're comfortable with.
All right, great.
The, the last thing I would say real quick, too, is, um, the way our agreement's structured is we only get paid if the community actually goes into a supply contract on flow, as we call it. Um, but if you sign our agreement, and they're five-year consultancy agreements, if you sign our agreement, let's say we get Public Utilities Commission approval, and the town takes a look at the rates that have been offered, the program, and says, you know what, we've talked to residents, the opt-outs are concerned, the rates aren't great, and we're just not gonna move forward. There's no termination, you don't owe us anything, we only get paid if the community moves forward with the program. So in that regard, you get to kind of explore first and, and get educated, even become street legal in the eyes of the state before you're really making a final decision to move forward with it, so.
Okay.
I only have one question. I knew you had mentioned like seniors who are living on fixed income. What about those who are receiving assistance through Rhode Island Energy? How will they be impacted?
Oh, great question. So those folks won't have any impact, so they'll still get the same level of assistance, uh, even if the community's in a community choice aggregation program. And it's the same for folks that are net metering and exporting their solar back to the grid. They're still gonna receive all the benefits through this program that they would on the last resort service with Rhode Island Energy.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you guys for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, North Smithfield Town Council is sitting as a Board of Licensing. A discussion by Council vote on other action on transfer of liquor license. Yamafuji Inc., DBA Yamafuji, to Fuji RI LLC, DBA Yamafuji, located at 900 Victory Highway, Unit 3.
Good evening, Matthew Skavidi for Yamafuji. By brief way of background, um, the transfer is actually going to be to the exact entity name of Fuji RI Inc. I believe there was a typo in the application that provided it as LLC.
Mm-hmm.
Further, there is going to be no change as to the purposes or use of the license under the new entity. The only change is due to a change in ownership from Yamafuji Inc. Two members will no longer have any interest, and under the new entity, they'll be adding one new member and retaining three of the previous. Otherwise, the purposes and use will remain the same.
So Madam Clerk, does, does this application need to be amended, or?
No, please change it. I'm just gonna put it like that.
Okay. All right, and it looks like everything's in order. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, we'll make a motion to approve the transfer of a liquor license from Yamafuji Inc. Wait a minute, you, if it's going from Yamafuji Inc. to Yamafuji Inc., it's just different ownership?
The new entity is, the exact name's actually Fuji RI Inc.
Fuji RI, oh, okay, all right. From Yamafuji Inc. doing business as Yamafuji to Fuji RI Inc. doing business as Yamafuji.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes, all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You, too. Discussion by Council vote on other action on mobile food truck license. Rollin Ice Cream location will be at town events. Is there anyone here for that? No? So I'm just gonna ask a question, 'cause I know this truck was at the fireworks, so is this license just after the fact, or?
I'm not sure about the fireworks, I don't think, but they just put the application in, um, submitted on April 29th.
It was submitted on April 29th?
Right.
Okay. And everything's in order?
Yes.
Had they called and checked on the license, status of the license?
So there are notes in the system that they are waiting for the license to be sent to them, they would normally get it through the email. Um, I know that we just received all the information, that's why it was not on the agenda until this week.
Okay.
So everything's approved now.
All right, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I will. I would like to make a motion to approve the mobile food truck license for Rollin Ice Cream.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve?
Yes. All right, let's, uh, move down to, um, old business discussion by Council vote on other action on status slash progress items. One Charter Review Committee, Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes. So I'd like to review the proposed Charter Review Committee timeline.
It's in our packets. I go all the way down to it.
So essentially, as a Charter Review Committee, we met a week before last and aligned on a proposed agenda for our work. Give me one second, we got a lot of pages in this packet. Okay, um, and if it's helpful, I can go line by line, but essentially, obviously, July 2025, we, uh, it was the formation of our committee, we reviewed and discussed some of our processes. Our last committee meeting, well, I lied, our, in July, actually, we reviewed our charters, our chapters one through five, um, but we'll continue to review and discuss chapters one through five since we had some really productive dialogue during that meeting. Um, in September, we intend to review and discuss the next chapter, six through 10, um, and subsequently, October, November, we intend to review the, the rest of the charter. Um, by December, we would like to review and create our suggested changes report. We then want to be able to distribute and present a draft suggested, um, changes report to the town council. Uh, we would then like to, in February of 2026, solicit public feedback on some of the changes that we suggest, and in March of 2026, incorporate our town council administration and our public feedback into our final report that we then intend to present to the town council in April of 2026. We would, we are aiming to have all of the referendum questions approved for May, 'cause we know that we won't necessarily have a lot of time during the budget season, um, to approve those questions. So we would like to approve, or rather, review at the council for approval of the referendum questions in May, and then have those questions sent to Rhode Island SOS, uh, for inclusion on the ballot for our November election. Uh, we intend to also have a voter education campaign, so between July and October, to have education forums as well as education reference guides to ensure that our constituents understand the referendum questions. Um, and then with all of that being said, those questions would then be on the ballot for November 3rd, 2026. Any questions about that timeline?
It's kinda tight, huh? How many, how many meetings you have in a month?
Uh, we started with once a month, but dependent upon dialogue and dependent upon, um, timing, we're open to meeting twice a month. But there's also a lot of work in the in-between, so we're not saving the meetings to do the work, like we all kind of have homework in the in-between, so we're coming to these meetings prepared to discuss.
How'd the first meeting go?
It went really well.
Yeah.
It went really, really well. Um, we went through chapters one through five, and at first we were like, well, what are we really gonna talk about? But honestly, there was a lot of content. Um, we did talk a little bit about some of the referendum questions that were proposed in the past, like staggered terms, um, the four-year term, as well as the town manager versus town administrator referendum questions, so that was a bit of the dialogue as well. But there's some minor changes we discussed, some major changes that we discussed, but we'll continue to refine those in our next meeting.
Nice.
Um, Councilwoman, if I could just ask that when you, um, in January, if you distribute, uh, the suggested changes for us to the town council, could you also do it to town administrator?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So tonight, we're just essentially looking for approval of our timeline.
And Mr. Administrator, you'll obviously submit that to the town planner and finance and stuff to review.
Yes, I've already reached out to all department heads, asking for any comments at this point on issues that they feel are relevant, but yes, once I get feedback from the, uh, commission, then I will definitely distribute to department heads.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
So the, um, when, with the charter, so obviously, you're going through the whole charter, correct? Uh, so what happened last time, back in 2016 or 18? Um, the Charter Review Committee came up with so many different things?
Yeah.
That we weren't able to put them all on the charter?
Yep.
I mean, on, on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, so I thought we were gonna be more like laser-focused, so, uh, so you're just going through, and then we're gonna narrow it down to X amount of?
Yeah, and, and Jeff, feel free to keep me honest here, uh, but we really don't intend for there to be more than three or four referendum questions. Yeah, we know that we were in, like, in the past, the town council was inundated with referendum questions. There is a lot of opportunity in the charter, um, but we do know that we can also use at least one or two of the charter questions as like a blanket question, or like for any of the changes that were, that need to essentially align with state law. So there are, there are, we don't intend to have a lot of questions. Um, our review of the charter is primarily to understand where there are any big-ticket items that we need to be aware of, so if we only have three or four questions, where do we wanna focus our time? Uh, but there will be one or two questions that do need to account for the state law changes as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, three to four.
Thank you.
I mean, it's great to have a full review, because even if we don't get through them all this time around?
Yeah.
At least you've already reviewed, and then?
Absolutely.
We can continue to clean it up.
And that was some of the logic as well, like if we're going to just align on three to four questions, um, but the, any other opportunities that we also identified, sorry, I clamped my back as to, any other opportunities that we also identified, any other potential questions, let's put those in a repository, because we really see the charter review, it's, I don't think it's going to be a one-and-done situation. I think that there's always going to be a need to review our charter, and with every potential election, have referendum questions to ensure that, you know, this, our charter is relevant, up to date, um, and we're still having, you know, dialogue on some of the bigger-ticket items. So that's our intention, is to have a repository, um, so that we can continue to review essentially year over year.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. It's a big undertaking.
You're very welcome, it's been, it's been fun.
You just started, right? All right, thank you. Anyone have anything else on this? Okay. Uh, Hallwell Multi-Generational Building Committee, Mr. Porter?
Um, I'm here to give our monthly update for the Hallwell Building, uh, Multi-Generational Building Committee. Uh, I had emailed you guys a while back at the beginning of July, on our July 1st meeting, uh, with a couple of items that we had pre, uh, presented as recommendations to the council. Uh, and since then, we have also had an additional meeting this past, uh, just last week, so I can bring you up to snuff on that as well. But basically, uh, where we are right now is, uh, BH Plus A has wrapped up their design development documentation, it's out for cost estimating right now, so we're in that, that process. We also reviewed finishes, uh, paint colors, materials for, uh, exterior siding, what have you, uh, pretty extensively this past Thursday night, lots of good information, uh, very well-thought-out design that's been put forth so far. Um, we also met with, uh, the Chair of the Food, North Smithfield Food Pantry. Uh, while that was a very productive conversation and a great education, uh, the Food Pantry has since let us know that they don't, would, aren't proceeding with us during this phase one. So we're gonna be remaining focused on the building as presented to the town council up to date now, uh, to date now. And then lastly, uh, per our charge, there are a number of, uh, items or, uh, grant opportunities that have been pr, provided by, uh, committee members and members of the public for, uh, reporting back to you, uh, as far as our first charge goes, is identifying potential funding sources. So we have now, uh, sent over those to you, uh, and they include Navigant Credit Union, Walmart, Stop &amp; Shop, USDA, Bank of America, Mondelez International, and CVS. Uh, the, the one question that we do continually seem to get hung up on is, I know our resolution states that we are to only identify funding sources, but we have been hearing from other committee members that there are donors out there that would like to participate in this process. So what we have, I've spoken with the administration, trying to set up an account to at least have the town have an area where you can have residents that feel like donating, that can be input right into there. Um, I'm not sure what that process is, but I know that there are donors that are out there that are looking to do so. As far as that goes, like I said, we had a great meeting last week, and, uh, that's where we're standing. So in a couple of weeks, like I said, we are getting our cost estimate, so we'll be looking at that very closely in, in line with, uh, the available grants that we have to date, also along with the administration, we'll be looking at those. So, uh, we're, we're really excited to continue moving forward and going from there.
Can I ask a question about, uh, an account for donations? Is that something?
We can open up a fund or, or an account, um, it just, you know, residents could just drop off a check. I am hesitant to open the town up to any type of online, uh, funding sources, um, you know, just because of cybersecurity and stuff like that, I don't wanna open this up to any type of risk. But we could certainly look into opening up a fund or an account under, uh, an existing fund that's designated for donations, um, from residents or businesses, whoever that might be. They just simply mail us a check, designate the fact that it's for X project, and we deposit it and keep it there.
I don't, not trying to be devil's advocate, but what if for some reason we lose this funding and people are sending us checks and donations? What, what do we do? Like that's, I, I sound like this is kind of a slippery slope that we're?
You would have to reimburse, you'd have to keep copious details and reimburse these donors.
Yeah, which we keep all deposits on.
Yeah, I, I know, and like, and, okay, I, I don't know.
That's why, well, that's why I don't wanna deflect, it's another reason why I don't wanna do online, is 'cause we, getting that back out to people would be very hectic.
Yeah.
And having records of online, uh, donations is, I just don't feel, doesn't sit right with me. Physical checks, it's a little bit easier for us to handle.
We'll, we'll come up with a, a recommended approach and how to deal with all those things.
I mean, 'cause if we're receiving like twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, you know what I mean, like, do we really open that up right now?
Add a zero to it.
Well, I, I think.
Say, add a zero to it.
I, I think, and, and I, I applaud what, what the committee's doing, this isn't gonna get us across the finish line, but it could be critical in us doing a lot of the other things that we'd like to do on this project that may not be included as part of the base bid, but, I mean, our focus still has to really remain on the big money, 'cause until we get the big money, we don't have a project.
Right.
So we'll have to, we'll, we'll work very closely and come up with the best strategy to manage that for you.
Yeah, I think we should kinda hold off on this until we actually know it's coming and we're?
And when we get to my section on the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about that.
All right, thanks.
I, I already met with Jeff and gave him an update on it.
Yeah.
Again, I'll just bring up that some nonprofits do commitments, so you make the commitment.
Yeah.
And then theoretically, if the project goes forward, hopefully those commitments come through, you know?
Right.
As opposed to actually receiving the money.
Yeah.
So would we need a separate nonprofit for?
No, just to, um, it'd be a, it'd be a, you know, fundraising campaign, but it would be a, you'd make a commitment to, to donate, right? Commitment, if that's what people go on, you know, really wanna do, they could send Commitments. If that's what people go on, you know, really want to do, they could send a letter, "We commit." And when the time comes, that way, you don't have to worry about interest on money, returning money if the project doesn't go forward. If it happens, somebody committed twenty-five dollars, you call them at that time. If this turns into some big, large amount of money, then you better check with everybody and see if they're still committed. But generally speaking, that's a lot cleaner, I mean, a lot cleaner than collecting twenty-five or fifty-dollar donations or even thousand-dollar donations.
Don't worry, we'll return your five thousand.
That's all right. I'll make a commitment.
I'm just worried that if someone commits or sends money and a certain something isn't put in that building, and then it's like, well, you know, I donated and...
We have put together, like, some collateral, and I think we gave this to you at your last meeting, some collateral for naming rights, if somebody wants to name the multipurpose room.
Yeah, I understand that.
And there's that opportunity. So if there's commitments like that, that we get definitive, you know...
But that's a little bit of a bigger donation of commitment.
Those are bigger ticket items, so that could certainly help get us over the finish line when we're at the end of the day, too.
Okay. All right.
How do you go about promoting that, though? Is that something that the town takes on, so there's a list, you know, somebody wants to buy the naming rights to the community room, hundred thousand dollars? How does that get, you know, out to bid?
Yeah, I think we have to sit back and think this thing through, we'll come back to with a better outline for it. Not that they haven't thought about it, okay, but based on the comments you're making, we'll come back with recommendations with the committee.
Yeah, people aren't gonna be lining up to be dropping off checks, but if you did, if you offered them a brick...
That's one of the options. Yep, that's one of the options.
You offer them something, you know, all right, for fifty dollars, you get a brick with your name on it in front of the building forever, then they'll be, maybe they'll line up to drop off a check, but they're not just gonna swing by and say, hey, here's fifty dollars. It's not gonna happen.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna take a lot of fifty-dollar or twenty-five-dollar checks to...
At this point, any little bit helps.
I understand that, but when we're talking about six million dollars...
But it also acts as a community-building effort, too. We come together as a town to put something together that's really wonderful, you know? I think we need to make sure that we're all, at the end of the day, we're all on this together, whether, whatever side...
No one said we're not. We're just saying it's a lot of, that two million dollars is a lot to make up with a lot of twenty-five-dollar, fifty-dollar checks.
And I've seen a lot of communities raise that in excess, so it can be done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. And when's your next meeting?
Our next meeting, I believe, is August seventh.
At what time?
Should be at six o'clock.
I'm sorry, what day is August seventh?
It's a Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Municipal Building Review Task Force, so today we had our weekly call with ECC and Signal Works, the usual subcommittee, which is Administrator, Mr. Punchak, Chief, just kind of reviewing any updates. So going forward, ECC will be attending the first meeting of every month to give an update. And there, you know, the public can ask any questions. We're gonna try and make it kind of quick so they don't take up too much of the meeting, but he might come with like one slide or so and just show, you know, what the next steps are or what progress has been made on the, on the agenda or on the timeline. So that will be moving forward, starting the first meeting in August.
And the positive is there's a lot of interest in this project in the marketplace right now.
You know what they say, over thirty...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive. I don't know, and maybe Council, you have a better opinion on the, feedback on this, but I get the sense that the market's slowing down. There's starting to be a lot more interest in projects like this, and we're also seeing a lot of feedback from other contractors and project developers that prices have started to come back, come down a little bit, too.
Yeah, it's a good timeframe. Summer work's gonna be finishing up, so people are looking to find something to do for, people are looking to find something to do for the fall, starting in the fall, so. Construction documents are done.
Okay.
They were done June thirtieth. They were sent out to BidNet, and they were also sent to some, you know, pre-selected contractors. BidNet opens it up to everybody. There was probably half a dozen, maybe eight, you know, people that ECC have worked with. The town suggested that they get in contact. I suggested a few, so they were, you know, contacted directly. There is a pre-bid walkthrough tomorrow morning at the police station for interested bidders to attend. I am not sure off the top of my head when the bids are due, though. Do you know that, Tony?
I don't want to say, they just, we changed the date because of the advertising. But it's, I think, I want to say, I want to say mid-August.
Would be about right. So then we'll get construction manager bids mid-August to review.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of turnout. It's great.
Why did we change the date? Because of advertising?
Because of the holiday, we didn't anticipate the newspaper, just the preemptive, sending it to them and then sending it back for proof, and just because of the mix-up of the holiday itself. Yeah, it's, but we ended up advertising it last week, Tuesday. Everything got posted that day, and it's been up there since.
Okay.
So that will be on the first meeting agenda on August for an update from ECC. Yeah, that's great. Material, sand and stone, status of experts. As far as we know, we're slated for the second meeting in August as of right now, so there's no public comment tonight. It's just to say that it was supposed to be tonight, but...
And just for clarification reasons, the purpose for the delay has been, number one, it was a lot more difficult to get appropriate people to submit or be interested in doing the peer review. We ended up connecting with one who was working with GZA, which really had the skill set all the way through. Then it came down to working out a scope with material. They actually wanted an expanded scope, and they're paying for it. So it took us a little bit longer to get all that done, but now the, GZA has to go through all the public testimony first, and then they're going to have opportunities for a meeting with people as well.
So that meeting, I think it's, what, August twenty-first? No, what day is it? Is it, is it the twenty-first? The eighteenth, right? Joanne, our second meeting's August eighteenth. Is she listening?
I don't think so.
Because the fourth is a Monday.
Yeah.
Also, as it relates to this, as the solicitor just informed me, because of the length of time that it's taken to get to this stage, he feels that we're gonna have to re-advertise this. Just to stay clear, clear up and clean on this.
I wouldn't want anybody in the public not to get notice in the advertisement. This has been a delay now, several months. That was unanticipated.
Right, no, absolutely. Okay. So yeah, so it's gonna be August eighteenth, and we're gonna obviously go back to the middle school, right? We'll ask for them to do that. Okay. All right, perfect. Discussion by Council vote on other action on Boarding Committee's Code of Conduct, Chris Sparrow.
Okay, a much-awaited topic. So I said a much-awaited topic. So I think you all know how passionate I've been about this Code of Conduct, and I do really feel strongly that I would love all of the town council's support. I worked with the town solicitor. He came up with a great suggestion on changing the enforcement language. So first and foremost, aside from that component of the Code of Conduct policy, nothing else has been changed. So I'm happy to read it word-for-word if you guys feel that that's appropriate and helpful. But aside from the enforcement section, also to anti-harassment and the anti-discrimination policies that were previously mentioned, because we do not, because those policies do not apply to our boards and committees and town councilors, I've removed that language. So aside from that change, as well as the enforcement section, those are the only two changes in the Code of Conduct. So what the Code of Conduct compliance essentially has been updated to, it reads as this. Compliance with Code of Conduct, A, generally. The goal of this Code of Conduct policy is to raise awareness and encourage compliance rather than enforcement penalties. The North Smithfield Town Council will monitor compliance with this Code of Conduct policy for the purpose of considering enforcement provisions in the future. So we've taken out all language of public censure and any of the language that, you know, some of us really felt strongly was really an infringement on our First Amendment right. So I hope that you are all amenable to that language, and I'm looking forward to your feedback.
I mean, I think, I think it looks great, you know, shortening it up a little bit. I think it's, it helps, and I mean, I think it's warranted, right? So it's just too bad we have to have this so that we can ask people to act civilly among each other, but it's come to this point, so, I mean...
I think there's one component to, Madam President, that I think is incredibly important, and I think we've kind of lost sight on this because it's become a lot of what's said on Facebook and, you know, personal vendettas, which are not the case. I think that hopefully in adopting and acknowledging this Code of Conduct that our elected and appointed officials will maybe be a bit more thoughtful on what they posted, say, about potential topics that could come in front of their board or committee. I think that there's a significant liability in appointed and elected officials speaking out on matters that could come before their board or committee. So I'm hoping that in adopting this Code of Conduct, that people will be more cognizant about what they share.
I'm gonna add to this, and this is my fifth term. I can honestly say, very few times has anyone in the newspapers, et cetera, and usually they weren't seated on this council, attacked anyone else, and we've agreed to disagree, and I can tell you, I do not at times agree with you, but I will defend your right to say what you want. And I can honestly say, and you've been around me, too, I think it's a waste of time. Maybe if we get someone who just loses it and we're trying to control him or her, but I have not. And you've come, did I ever see or hear, inappropriate. And it's the same, I'll tell you, I don't read any of those columns. It may, it may do their so good, but it makes me embarrassed for them. I don't know how anybody else feels, but to go with the others, because I have no problem with it. I will go for it. If it's the majority, I will, I will promise. You'd be a good girl scout, I'm kidding, of course, but I would not talk down a degree of person. But I'll go along with whatever wording you did, and you worked very diligently on it, and I appreciate that, too.
Madam President?
So I tend to agree with Claire. I don't see the real need for it, but you took out the enforcement provision, so not that you need my vote, but you have my vote, I'll go along with this, since the enforcement provision has been taken out.
Thank you, John.
I've been quiet on it. I don't think I've said anything about it at any of the meetings. I agree with Kim. It's unfortunate we have to, you know, get to this. I, you know, what happened to the golden rule, really? It's just, it's that simple. Since we are discussing it, there are a couple of things, you know, obviously I pay attention to punctuation and vocabulary. So one thing, it seems to me there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the first paragraph, the purpose. Volunteer their time and services on behalf of the town and members of the public by striving at every meeting, forum, or other official interaction. So that, to me, is saying, when I am doing something on behalf of the town, this applies. However, applicability, it talks about acting on behalf of the town and covers all of their actions and communications. So I feel like it's a little bit of, you know, discrepancy there. So I think if, you know, we want to move forward this, we just should just make sure that it's, you know, absolutely clear. Official business or anything, you know, if somebody wants to go and say something bad about somebody on Facebook, is that really the intent, or is it, you know, out here as a town counselor or any member of any board doing something on behalf of the town, I'm going to play nice?
So I read it as this, and I appreciate that perspective.
Yeah, I think there's two ways to look at it.
Yeah. I read it as this, if I am volunteering my time and services, I am associated with the town if I am volunteering my time and services. So I need to be cognizant of the way that I publicly present myself, if that's in a meeting, a forum. Maybe there's opportunity to define forum, because forum could be this. Forum could be a Facebook forum, right? And other official interactions. So I don't necessarily see it as when I'm only acting in an official capacity. I see it as, as somebody who is volunteering their time in an official capacity. I need to uphold this Code of Conduct because I am representing the town. Does that make sense?
Yes, I would just say, okay, so go out some night with friends and, you know, not necessarily say anything negative about anybody in this town, but there are photographs of, you know, having indulged in too many cocktails. Is that like grounds for, you know, saying, oh, well, Mr. Punchak, you know, obviously?
No, because I don't think that, then, that's not accounted for in the actual Code of Conduct, right? Because we're saying...
Well, it says all of their actions and communications. So that is, that is a broad statement right there, is what I'm trying to say.
Town Solicitor, how would you respond to that?
I think the discussions revolving on whether it's strictly actions on behalf of the town in the official capacity and not your private actions, and that distinction probably should be made.
And not your private actions.
Especially since we're talking about, there's no sanctions, we're just trying to establish a protocol. I think that'll satisfy Councilman Punchak. I think that makes sense. This is intended to be, you know, a thoughtful reminder at this point, right? So I think if somebody's doing something on their own time and it somehow casts some sort of negative light on the town, the recourse for that is not in this code.
Right.
It is, will be when they come up for reappointment.
Right, right. So where do you think that...
I just think that all we're gonna do is add all official actions and communications, consistent with the purpose, because the purpose makes it clear.
Yes.
So if you just mimic that, under the applicability, we can add the words that apply to all official actions and communications.
But is that just pertaining to when they're in a meeting that pertains to the town, or is this when they're outside?
On behalf of the town, so it'll be official actions and communications.
So that kind of defeats what I think...
Right, if you're dedication or something.
I don't think the Council, the Vice President was ever intended to regulate somebody's private conduct at their home.
No, but I think...
I think she was trying to regulate people's official conduct.
No, no.
And I'm not trying to speak for you, but I think what she was trying to do is anyone who serves on a board or committee for the town shouldn't be home at Facebook behind the keyboard, calling other people and slandering them and having their opinions of them so that everyone else can read and have it to an open forum of their readers who can also go and start making comments of...
Well, then, I don't have, I don't have a, there is no compromise there. You either got to, you either got to adopt this language consistent with Councilman Punchak's point of view or Councilwoman, or the Vice President's point of view. There's no, there's no compromise.
Yeah, I think it defeats the compromise. I just want to say this again. This is not something that Rebecca de Cristofaro came up with in a vacuum. Like, I did not come up with this language in a vacuum. This is something, that other, this is a Code of Conduct policy that other municipalities have today. I, I think if we want to get nitpicky, right, then, okay, private versus official, there is something, there could be an argument there. But at the end of the day, it's an acknowledgement that as an elected official, I am going to hold myself, unelected or appointed, I am going to hold myself to a professional standard, right? When I go out in town as a town counselor, I hold myself to a certain standard because I am representing the town. Whether I'm a town counselor, whether I'm on a board, I'm on a committee... Whether I am a town councillor, whether I'm on a board, I'm on a committee, wha- whatever capacity I'm volunteering my, my time in, I am an elected or appointed official and I'm representing the town. I'm not here to nitpick what you do privately, but it is inappropriate for elected or appointed officials to engage in derogatory, defamatory dialogue, especially in relation to other appointed and elected officials. That undermines our credibility and reputation as elected and appointed officials. At the end of the day, I did my best in accounting for everybody's perspective and feedback. I know that the enforcement section was, um, um, there was obviously feedback on that, and I think we came to a happy medium. Um, so, I'm comfortable with the current state of the code of conduct policy.
And I gotta tell you, um, good government requires, uh, compromise, and I, I'm, I'm good on my end. That was a good compromise, um, because I, I didn't wanna see it being forced, enforceable. I thought it violated people's, uh, First Amendment rights. That's gone, so I, I support you.
Thank you, John.
So, item two under code of conduct, right? It says, "Town elected and appointed officials must refrain from communicating or acting in a disrespectful abuse of and/or threatening manner towards members of the community, other elected or appointed officials, the town administrator, or town staff." So, with that said, maybe the purpose, maybe if we just do the purpose, the town recognizes that all individuals elected and or appointed by the town must maintain and enforce respectable discourse with their fellow elected and or appointed members, with those who work for the town, those who volunteer their town and services on behalf of the town, and maybe just take out the rest of it.
Um, can I, Carol, I don't know if you agree with me.
Well, we're not, we're not opening it up to the public right now.
Oh, okay. I, I, I was just gonna say, anyone that is functional and employed by a town, living in a town, you have to, you have to conduct yourself in a service, a, a way.
You would hope so, but-
You would think, but it doesn't happen today, which is the reason why we're having this conversation.
Madam President, I just wanna be sure, I thought, and I could be wrong, I thought Councilman Punchak was satisfied with paragraph one, the purpose, was concerned with paragraph two applicability.
I just want them to align, uh, one way or the other.
It's the applicability language is your biggest concern.
But if we take out the official interaction in the purpose, it would agree with the count of applicability, wouldn't it? And then it would also tie into item two, wouldn't it, in code of conduct? Because we're taking out their official interaction, 'cause we're not talking about just when they're at a board or committee.
Right, but I thought Councilman Punchak's point was, he only wanted it to be in the official capacity. Was I wrong on that?
Uh, it seems that was kind of the point I was making, yes.
Yes.
Like, you know-
So, it's more like you wanna amend paragraph two, the applicability, to say it should only be official actions or community. That's, that was, I, that's the gist of what I thought you were making.
Yes.
I'm not saying people agree, I'm saying that-
Yes.
No, but I don't think by changing paragraph one to match paragraph two addresses Councilman Punchak's point.
The reality is, if there was an instance where somebody was going to be derogatory towards somebody else, nine times out of 10, it's going to stem from something that has started or is going on within the town. So, I don't think you need to say that it's all communications. It's, go back, you know, why is somebody just going to randomly attack, you know, somebody else that is volunteering for the town unless there is a difference of opinion, you know, or there's something has started it? Well, you know, you started it in a public forum, you went back to your computer and, you know, continued it. I think it's pretty obvious that, that's why it happened. Whereas if I wanna go be a knucklehead somewhere, I can go be a knucklehead somewhere.
May I say something?
Like bringing on your church company?
I would, I would've agreed with you three weeks ago, but, um, when there was an enforcement element, and I hate to be Captain Obvious, but if there's not, um, an enforcement element to this, then why, why, why even debate the minutia of it? Just, you know what I mean? So, why, why debate the minutia and the little details about, about this when it's not even enforceable anyway? So, I, I think it's well-written and, and it just doesn't make sense to, uh, be trying to nitpick it when, um, it's, you can't even enforce it. It's just a suggestion.
Can I do like your recommendation, though?
But, you know, going back to, you know, it does type, I mean, if we bring it to broaden it, that anyone who serves or volunteers, they should hold themselves at a higher regard at all times, right? But then, everyone says, well, their, their, um, you know, their punishment is, is reelection or reappointment time. But then, how are you gonna go out and say, hey, remember when this person said this? You can't, because you're on a board or committee. So, either way, you just, you're hoping that people just act like they should, you know? But, like, it's, like, I do agree with you that there's nothing holding them to that, because no one can go out and say, hey, remember when he did that, remember when she did that, and because we're held to this, but then, it really doesn't stop anyone, but I, I-
I've taken, I've taken a lot of notes. There's people that would take him up for an appointment. I would have a whole bunch of stuff on them, so, uh- I remember, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if someone says, if someone's acting out of line, you remember it, you write it down, you remember it, and then if it, if it, if they come before you for a void and say, I'm not gonna support you for X, Y, Z. And, um, it's up to you as an individual to, uh, as, as someone who appoints these people, to remember that, uh, things that they've said and done in the past, if you don't-
How long is your list?
It's not that long, but-
It's like Santa Claus.
It's not, it's, it's not a, it's not a list like, it, but it's, I, I'm just letting you know, though, that, you know, I, if somebody comes before the board and they were acting in an unprofessional manner at one time, it is fair game to be, to be brought up, and that I would bring it up.
I mean, I think it's just a suggestion or something that we would hope that is just common sense, but we all know that that doesn't come free, so, um, I don't know, if maybe we just take out that line so that we're not holding them to a certain, but then, I understand your point, too, so.
I'm good with it, let's put it to a vote.
Yeah, I agree, exactly, exactly.
Whatever you wanna do.
I don't feel very strongly one-wayly on it, but-
I mean, again, this is all language that pre-existed Rebecca de Cristofaro, so I'm comfortable with-
Are you gonna make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, can I make a motion on my own, I don't?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I am going to make a motion to approve the code of conduct for our boards and committees. As is.
That's a, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Elves?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time you spent on it. Madam Clerk, can I just request that this gets sent, emailed, or mailed to all board members and volunteers and elected? Thank you. What?
Just saying I want it on the newsletter.
Yes, thank you. And we're gonna have, um, committee members sign off on it, right?
So, that means we all have to get the open meeting law, the procurement laws, and-
Yeah.
Government laws, so-
Well, which we should have, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then, um, Joanne, I don't know if anybody, if, my hope is that when people do apply for a board or a committee, that this would be included in that application, an acknowledgement of the code of conduct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, discussion by council vote on other action on appointments to town boards and commissions, resignation from groundwater protection committee, and an appointment to public arts advisory committee for a term 12-1, 2024 through 11-30, 2026. So, we have the resignation, uh, in your packet. Uh, from groundwater committee from, uh, Leigh Anne Gillette would like to, uh, resign from the groundwater protection committee. So, Madam Clerk, can you just send her a thank you note like we normally do? Thank you. And then, appointment to the public advi- arts advisory committee. You do have an application in your packet. Anyone like to make a motion or have any other nominations that you'd like to make at this time?
Madam President?
Yep.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to accept Leigh Anne Gillette's, uh, letter of resignation. However, I, I think it's worth reading her a letter of resignation. Um, if you don't mind, I, I'd be happy to read it. Please accept this letter as my resignation from the groundwater protection committee. It's a committee that has worked very hard and done a ton of research, but it seems that we all share, to the town council and other powers-to-be that are for the betterment of our town fall on deaf ears. In my opinion, this is why it is difficult to get people to volunteer for these committees. It is an effort in futility. Please share this letter and read it at the next town council meeting. So, I only read it because she requested, uh, that it be read.
Yeah, and Councilman on that, I actually made a notation on here to contact her.
Thank you.
I've never had any conversations with her about anything, so I'd like to know where she feels they weren't being listened to.
Right, and I was just reading it because she asked.
Yeah, I understood.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you let us know what you hear back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I made a motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call?
God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Elves?
Yes. And then, back to the public arts advisory committee. I'd like to make a motion to ex, um, to nominate Elizabeth Matthews for the public arts advisory committee for her, um, application in our packet.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
It's great to see people putting in for this, it's-
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great committee.
Yeah, we cut all that budget.
They still have some money in their, in their bank account, though. Yeah.
Yeah, and it sounds like she has some great experience, so it should, this should be nice. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Elves?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action on communications from town administrator. Uh, the first one is grant writer.
Sorry. Uh, in your package is the summary table that I previously provided to you. There have been some changes to it, and I wanted just to make a quick reference to those. There were, um, two, uh, community funding proposals that were submitted, uh, to Congress on water improvements. One was the Saint Paul Street Water Main, we call it number three now, keeps, Bill, Bill Dakota's always trying to keep me informed of what's one, two, three. There is no prior reason. Two is eliminated, three attempts to bring both of them together. And the other one was a waterline extension on Providence Pike. This goes with the PFAS issue. Also, um, there is, under the hollow well, uh, we have a $1.5 million request that has been, uh, included in, uh, Senator Reed's, um, request to Congress. That's a, a critical piece of, uh, of, uh, funding. I will be meeting with Senator Reed's staff on, um, Thursday, uh, to give them a good overview of these projects focusing on hollow well, and they also wanna talk about Route 146. So, they're gearing up. I'm not gonna sit there and profess to tell you what the heck's gonna happen up in Washington. If anybody knows, I don't think they know. But we would probably expect these conversations to start occurring probably around September, and probably won't see actual action on any of these until the early first quarter of 2026. So, we're gonna keep our ears to the pavement on that, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we hit paid her. Also-
Town administrator, just a, a question on, um, hollow well specifically. Um, are there any other grants that our grant writer feels could be a good match for?
At this point, no. Our focus is on the congressional appropriations, 'cause those are the big numbers.
Okay.
But we are scouring for the others. Things are starting to actually surface now.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, for example, the state's got an open space bond that's coming out right now. We're really not ready for that, but it's gonna come out again in the fall.
Okay.
So, we're starting to see some of that stuff happen, especially now the state budget's been passed. So, our, our focus is on that. I made it very clear that, um, although we have a lot of priorities as this town, I made it very clear to, uh, our congressional delegation, which I will reiterate on Thursday, hollow well's number one. We need to get hollow well built. The rest, you know, we'll, we'll piece it together. We're not gonna get three allocations from Senator Reed. It's not gonna happen. Can we get one? Yeah. Can we get two? Maybe. But it's too early to tell. But we are, we're, we're trying to scour availabilities. We also put in a, uh, a funding request to, uh, to White House for $300,000 under their Route 146 water sourcing. Um, that's in his package, which is positive. We've also, uh, submitted, um, a, it says right now to be submitted in July, it actually was submitted last week, and it's what's called MTAP, which is Municipal Technical Assistance Program. Uh, we apply for that money, um, and that would be used to take the Route 146 project past the current stage to the more advanced stage, which would be market studies, uh, coupled with a more definitive execution plan, uh, and a land use regulatory plan. How are we gonna guide development in that corridor? I think we put a very compelling request together for that application, so I think we stand pretty good to get it. And finally, we also submitted a grant under the United States Department of Transportation under what's called the Safe Streets and Roads Program. We've identified about nine main roads in town, and we said we need to increase public safety. And that, that money will be used to, to basically help us come up with a very definitive plan, which includes, you know, sort of, um, sequential investments that we can make to make our streets more, more safe. It's showing in there as a $40,000 in kind, that in, that $40,000 match, that match can be in kind. So, we can use our staff as part of that $40,000. So, I think we can get that without putting any cash on the table. So, that's where we are currently on our grant. We've got, as you can see, a lot of stuff on the table in a market that's very questionable right now. We have, uh, reached a tentative agreement with the grant writer, uh, that's within the budget that we've approved, that the council's approved, and, uh, we don't have that in a contract yet, but the grant writer's already working on our behalf. In fact, she's the one that set up the meeting with Senator Reed's staff, so we're, we're pushing forward.
Can she please look for a playground grant?
Absolutely. Maybe we could do this with the beavers, too.
As long as they're not killed. Beaver diversion grant. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Discussion by council vote on other action on town clerk's land records contract?
Um, I've got a couple of other things.
Oh.
That's right. I mean, if you don't wanna hear from me anymore, I'm cool with that.
You talked about 146, you, uh, senior services, sorry.
I did, I did talk about senior services.
Sorry.
And, and in your package is a memorandum I prepared. I had a conversation with the town council president. I'm not saying that you endorse this, I'm just saying we had a conversation, and she made a very interesting, uh, thought, which I felt was a really good, um, segue, if you will. Um, as we made it very clear, we do not, under any circumstances, wanna lose any services to our seniors. And in response to that, we immediately provided a $5,000 grant to aging well, um, although it's not required for the food program, it was good faith, uh, so we can continue that program in town. We, we had a lot of conversations about creating sort of an organizational structure in town, uh, a new nonprofit, uh, that could then, uh, be the source of our stipends to run senior programs. There's a lot of moving parts on that. Setting up a 501(c)(3) corporation, getting the right insurance in place, because it's a separate entity using public, you know, buildings. It's a little complicated. So, what we felt would be better is to- So what we felt would be better is to effectively run the senior program this year in a somewhat similar way to we running Camp Phoenix. Effectively, it's a part of the town operations. And then Linda and her group will be paid stipends, just as we do with Camp Phoenix. And so there won't be any organizational requirements. We don't have any insurance requirements. We can keep the programs running. We don't lose any, anything here, so we can continue to do that within the budget that the council appropriated. And then, within this next six months, then also on the side, start putting together a more definitive plan for next year to deal with all the organizational issues. Linda's done a great job in getting some great people who want to serve on the board, who at the interim stage could serve as an advisory capacity, including the former president of Aging Well and the former treasurer of Aging Well. So I've got a couple other people in town who want to get involved to help support this upstart of this program. So I think it's a really nice, simple way to get going, not lose any headway right now, serve our seniors, and give us the time to really put together a good plan of action for next year and the years after. And I made it very clear, my, my hope is that we can create an internal or an external organization that works for the town that positions itself ultimately to become the operator of Hollowell Multi-Generational Facility. That's the goal. Luckily, we've got enough time now. We can start putting the pieces together on that to make sure that it's done in a way that the council is comfortable with it. So that's what the memorandum says, and I think it's a really good way to proceed. And I want to emphasize, and people have to understand, and I'm not saying this for any other reasons other than clarity, that Linda is the one that developed the Senior Wellness Program for Aging Well. She did that whole program herself. She set it up. She ran it. She knows what has to happen within that program. And that makes me extremely comfortable in our capacity to continue to run the same programs and services that we are running under Aging Well, but run them in North Smithfield at Scouters Hall.
Administrator, I couldn't agree with you more. Linda, great job. You know who she got to do the, not the aerobics, but what do you call it? All the physical? Well, the zumba. Yeah, you know, tell them what that woman used to do for a living.
Oh, she used to be a Rockette.
She used to be a Radio City Rockette, all right? And now she's at Scouters Hall teaching zumba.
Don't you want to say Richard Simmons?
Is he still alive?
Huh?
No.
No, he passed away. Councilman, you're at that age now. I expect to see you there and do some zumba classes.
What's funny is, if I went there, I wouldn't be visiting. I'd actually belong there now.
Me, too.
Are we currently hosting senior classes at Scouters?
Linda? That's why I wanted you here.
Yes.
Do you mind, do you mind going up?
I don't have a schedule.
Linda?
Can you go to the mic?
Linda, can you go to the podium, please?
I thought I was just a listener tonight, so I didn't bring anything with me.
Linda Tebow, 83, St. Paul Street, senior advocate. Yes, we have a very robust schedule going there already.
Okay.
And we were fortunate enough, we have classes Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We haven't had much going on on Wednesdays because of municipal court. Scheduling can be a bit of an issue there, but I do plan. Right now, we have, I'm adding two more, no, three more classes, because I've had the opportunity to work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, all the different people that are willing to come and, and offer programs and pay for some of these classes. So even though we have the monies that you all had said was okay, we're able to get more. And so coming, for September, I've added, no, for August, I added three more classes. Coming up in September, we'll be adding, Wednesday is going to be like an education day, so that'll be the day that we'll have things like cooking with Chef Kevin, brain power, those kinds of things, you know. That Blue Cross Blue Shield will be presenting for no money. So we'll be using any sources that we have that are willing to come in. We're going to be bringing in URI Pharmacy, URI Nutrition. I've worked with them in the past, and they come, and they help us out. In September, we are going to be having the annual Senior Center, National Senior Center Month, and we'll have a celebration up there. I have funding promised for that. In November, we're going to be having Veteran Appreciation Dinner. I have funding for that already in a place. So we're moving forward, and I just texted Town Administrator there. I was with David Cicilline on Saturday at an event. His staffer was having a street named after her, so I was invited to go. And, you know, he had asked me, how's the center going? And I kind of, well, I didn't fib a little bit, but I said, great. I said, it's going great. We're having meetings, and, you know, we're working with DEM on the permitting, and we did, now we have just done the design development, and we looked at colors and everything. And he said, great, great. He said, as soon as you're a 501(c), give me a call. So, you know, we're going to have to work on that, Mr. Cicilline.
He made that as, he made that comment in relationship to the seniors program.
Oh, the seniors program, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is the seniors program. And when I left, and he said, make sure you contact me, so I have a contact number, and I will be calling him for sure. And, you know, we, this came up at, at our meeting the other night, Mr. Ponchat, huh? We talked about this. Because I said, you know, when we're, you know, I want to get us a nice program together. I'm not doing this forever, guys. I'm not. I'm good. Well, I'm not, Claire. Claire, I'm not. I'm going to be 82 on my next birthday, and I would just like to get us a really good program together, and then kind of walk off into the sunset and let somebody else take over. But, you know, and I did say, my plan for Scouters is to have, oh, and we have quilters there as well.
I saw that.
We have Notherman Island Quilters, and somebody has offered to teach Marjan, and that's for nothing as well. There seems to be a big thing about this now. I don't know what it is. It's cards. Cards, and, but they like it, so that. But my plan at Scouters is to be there Monday through Friday and maybe have a couple of meals, you know? There's been a request for a couple of meals, so, you know, and it still is licensed as a meal site, so we can. So the long and the short, my, I thought what I was going to try to do, and that's what is expected of me, to get a really robust plan, so as soon as that new center is built, that we can just move right on over there. And, you know, for, you know, I do seniors. I mean, we have intergenerational events with, with the kids, and I've planned some of those already as well. But, you know, I said Monday through Friday, you know, eight, nine o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon. That's, that's, I'm working on that, so if you don't want it, let me know. I won't work so hard. Any other questions?
Just a few funding questions. So how have we been paying for the classes to date that have been going on at Scouters?
We're starting, well, yes. Up until the end of June, I left, when I left Aging Well, there was $20,000 left from the money that the town gives to Aging Well. And that was to include my salary, but, you know, I was planning to stay till the end of June, and others thought differently. So I left on October, April 22nd, so that meant they had that money. But out of that money, they were paying for all the instructors till the end of June.
Okay.
So, and I do believe this new money starts July.
I want to make sure you understand, we have not been paying for these programs out of the new appropriation.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
I wanted, we did approve the budget, but I wanted to make sure I circle back with the council. That's, so the money should be paid for going forward.
Okay, so then, pre-appropriation, the money, we've been funding these classes through, there's been an allocation through Aging Well that you've been using?
Aging Well was picking up the tab. They were getting all the invoices until the end of June.
Okay.
Until the end of June.
And then there's the transition.
And now it's into the next.
One more question, Linda.
Sure.
You mentioned meals. Now, I know that currently we've donated, I think it was $5,000 for food services for Aging Well, either at Steel at One Socket or what was the other location?
The Meadows.
The Meadows.
The Meadows.
Yeah.
So who would be providing food at Scouters? Is it through Aging Well as well?
Well, there are a couple of ways we can do it, because, you know, we, $5,000 went to that program, the meal, meal program, and they are serving meals at The Meadows, and the people in Meadows like it there.
Yeah.
They like it there. They already have asked the question, do we have to go someplace else? I don't think they do. But what the folks that are coming to Scouters have said, gee, maybe could we have a couple of meals a week? And I said, sure, why not? I'm thinking, like, you know, if they're in, they're in the morning, and they want to go to something in the afternoon, let them have a lunch. There are two ways we can do this. We can, I can call Steve Healy, who's the director of the Congregate Meal, and he could make the arrangements for that to happen, or I could call the very same caterer myself and say, bring the meals over.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't know, I guess is the answer. I don't know how, but it could, it could happen.
But you don't like it.
And it still would be a $3 donation.
Okay.
So.
And then I just want to confirm, too, based on, I think it was the Valley Breeze article, that in the event, and like I've said before, there's, I would, I would love for us to have our very own senior program, and I think this is getting much closer to bringing that in-house. But based on the Valley Breeze program, Valley Breeze article?
Which one? The last one?
I think it was, it was the last one. I think it was that our seniors, in the event they still want to go to One Socket to Aging Well, that is still available to them?
Sure it is, if they want to. And as, as far as I'm concerned, and, and by the way, you know, that article was written in response to the one that, I was on the front page, but anyways, the, we have One Socket people that come to Scouters Hall. We have, and they're the ones that are, lots of people have stepped up to the plate to say they want to help me, you know, with things like flyers and things, because I'm not good at that. But, yeah, so, you know, they can come. You know, the fact of the matter is, in the state of Rhode Island, not so much in Massachusetts, it's different there, but anybody can go into any senior center. You don't even need to be a member. You don't need to be a member to have a meal. You just have to meet the criteria. For the meals, it's 60 and above.
Okay.
And for most senior centers, it's 55. But most of the senior centers have membership fees, and we have to decide whether we want to do that as well. But, you know, that's, that, when I say this is a work in progress, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, no, and I think it's getting closer and closer to.
I think it's going to be great, actually. I think it's going to be great, and the setting that we're going to have to house this is going to be one of the best in the state, really. It'll be really great.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay? I talk too much.
Linda?
No, thank you.
Linda, one thing. I think people are starting to realize, what I've known for a long time, that we're lucky to have you.
Oh, John. No, it's my pleasure. It's my pleasure, you know? You know, I will tell you, it was very sad when I left Aging Well. I've been there, I'm going on 17 years now. Things didn't work out, and that's okay, and I miss the people that I've taken care of for all these years. It's, it's sad, but some of them are coming, they're following me, so, you know? But thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Are you all, is your? I don't want to cut you off.
I'm fine with that. When I go home, I'll be cut off again. No, 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 I'm, I'm good with it.
Discussion by Council vote on other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. They'll be
Do you want to do this thing first? Yes.
What is it?
This was the Town Clerk's Land Records Contract.
Oh, sorry, I crossed it out because I thought we were already moving on. Sorry. So back to discussion by Council vote on other action on Town Clerk's Land Records Contract.
So this is a five-year contract with Avenue, which is, they provide all of our paid transactions for the office, also including the credit card machine. So any transactions that we do, whether it's a business registration, a license, a copy, a notary, recording records, it's pretty much the whole process that our office uses to, to work through, while our land evidence gets recorded through that, so that every five years, we have a new contract, and it has gone up quite a bit. Unfortunately, there's not any other services that we can use. So we did take a little while to move forward. We were trying to stay with the old, they had an old system, but within the next five years, everything's moving to a new system. Unfortunately, we have no choice. We would have to move to that new system. So we were putting it off, trying to get quotes and getting, trying to get things a little bit cheaper, and maybe wait till the end of the five years, but after doing research, the request of the Town Administrator also would like, wanted us to add the fraud alert to the residents, which tells everybody if somebody has recorded anything within their name or their address. And seems to be a lot of that now. So once we looked into the fraud alert, we noticed that that was going to cost quite a bit of money to add it to our existing service, so we did some comparisons and decided to jump into the new service now and just try to get things moving. So that's
I think one of the things we're also going to have to understand, right now, we have the funds.
Correct.
And there's funds at the state level that are through the transactions that we have funds to pay, but we're going to have to start, we're fine this year, but we're going to have to start setting aside some additional money, just so that we can bankroll for the future. To be honest with you, these programs, whether it's Avenue or Open Gov, great programs, but they're getting ridiculously expensive. But we're at a point now where we can't really operate without them. So it's a problem that we need to really start thinking about budget-wise in the future.
So now the 107, so it's showing a five-year breakdown. So is the 107, so it's $22,000 for this year, and then following the schedule for a total of 107 out of the five years, right? And we have that budgeted this year?
We did not have it in the budget. We've been using that out of the historical fees, which is put aside for land records, historical.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the funds that are in there, we're probably good for about four years.
Just about.
On the fourth year, on the, so on the fourth year, that fund will run out of money to support them.
Which is why we need to start thinking about that next budget process, to start putting money aside, so we don't end up with a big hit one year.
I figured every year or so, we share the cost of the contract, split the costs between general fund and the retention, record retention fund, which this goes through currently, so that, you know, that this will be able to be covered, and it would ease the general fund into the cost of this over time.
So is there any other expense that is used from this record retention fund? Is, do we use anything from that?
There are other expenses. I'd have to pull the fund back up.
Well, it has to be historical, so we've, we've done a lot of work in the vault, redoing books, where we had map skin from the state that are just all falling apart. So that is what I was initially trying to use that for, but we have been using it for Avenue since that money was available, so. But now, we're using it every year for that Avenue, so that funds are depleting much quicker. I think in the past, that we used, the, the land record was paid for out of the general fund, but when that money was located for historical fees, we thought we should start using some of it towards the, the use of that.
So now, at a future meeting, will we have to reclass these funds to like IT or something, or contract services, or?
This would be, so the cost, the portion of cost for this, I was thinking, you know, five, you know, one year, sharing $5,000 into, you know, the upcoming FY '27 budget, we would put five grand into the Town Clerk budget, their department, for a share of the cost of the contract, and then the following year, 10 grand, and the following year, 15, and then keep it at 15 with the, you know, a year-over-year incline of, you know, 1% to 2% based on the contracts increase from year-over-year after that. That should, based on the math of historical data from this fund, the record retention fund, based on the expenses and revenues, it could support that variation of 15 grand of it goes towards the Town Clerk Department. it could support that variation of fifteen grand of it goes towards the town clerk department in the general fund, and the remainder of it goes to the record retention fund. And, yeah, so the, I just had to pull up the expenditure report.
The record retention fund, is that not in the general fund, or is that just a reserve?
It's a, it's its own, it's Fund one-two-seven, it's its own fund, just like the business revolving fund, just like water and sewers, its own fund.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, they, they have fees that come in and expenses.
Ten percent fee for each recording.
Right.
That the town receives, and it's to be used towards land records, historical, so.
Yeah, the, the expenses are all, they're all labeled land records. You got a printer here and there for some ink.
That was the maps.
Yeah, that's it.
Printed, yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
I just don't think that I got all the information in the digital packet and the supplemental material sent in email.
I did send some in your email.
You did, you sent one component of it, but I'm looking at some of the stuff that they have, and it looks like it's a little bit different. So who, who would we be contracting with?
Avenue.
Avenue, okay. Yeah, I just didn't have this breakdown going.
Okay.
That's okay then.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Where did you get all this other stuff?
I got this.
You've probably got this stuff.
Yeah, 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 that's where I got it. Okay, so it's with Avenue. Okay.
All right, any more questions?
So who's Carisoft then?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how they work together. How does Carisoft integrate with?
Carisoft, I'm pretty sure it's a parent company.
Okay.
Of Avenue. Avenue is the program itself.
Okay.
Just like, um, Power School is a power company to our accounting software, e-finance.
Okay.
So we'll look for a pool on this.
Yeah, the contract.
I will make a motion to approve the contract with either Carisoft or Avenue for the land records.
And what do I signature?
And authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
Do you want to state it's a five-year contract?
It is a five-year contract in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, four hun, one hundred seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau Godd?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
All right, discussion by council vote on other action on consent agenda. All items in, all items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A, town council minutes of January sixteenth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, and thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, and communications, animal control monthly report, Nussman Field Fire and Rescue monthly report, Nussman Field Municipal, Municipal Court monthly report, and Nussman Field Police Department monthly report for June two thousand twenty-five. Would anyone like to remove anything on the consent agenda? I personally want to remove the minutes of six sixteen. Anyone else?
I will make a motion to approve all of the consent agenda items with the exception of the minutes for June sixteen.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Godd?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
On the minutes of June sixteenth, um, on the front page, when we're talking about discussion by council vote on other action on resolution regarding opposition to Rhode Island two thousand twenty-four gun control resol, uh, legislation, down at the bottom, before we talk about how Mr. Bureau Godd moved to adopt the resolution, it has, Kim Howes expressed disappointment. That's not what I said, because this is talking about, I think, Mr. Cristofaro's code of conduct. What I did say is I was disappointed that NRI printed a story without getting any comment from anyone, and I thought it was irresponsible. That's what I did say. Thank you.
That was definitely AI. Okay, we're gonna remove that.
Okay. No, Kim, well, can you state what I said and fix that?
You'd, you'd rather have exactly what you said?
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
Okay.
Kim, I thought you mentioned that it wasn't, you didn't feel as though it was appropriate for us to have, yeah, to have that conversation, this, this decision at the town level, that it was a state.
Yeah, I also said that too, but if we're gonna talk about what I was talking was unnecessary, was not necessary and unfortunate, was that I thought it was irresponsible that NRI printed that article without getting any comment. And then I also did say that to be discussing this at the town level, when it was really gonna rely on the state, so, if you want to go back and listen to it.
Okay.
That was that one. And then, um, on page, I guess, the next full page, where it talks about the committee's code of conduct. So I don't know about everyone else's, but the copy is totally cut off, so we can't read what was actually done, like at the bottom of the, of the page, like, I guess, page three.
Can't trust AI.
You know what it says?
Well, I mean, I don't know if, if these notes, are these the ones that go into?
No, they were copied in the office.
All right, so, yeah, can you read it, what it does say, just so we know?
Rebecca Cristofaro presented a draft code of conduct policy for town elected and appointed officials. The policy aimed to maintain respectful discourse and enhance the effectiveness, credibility, and accountability of all elected and appointed officials. John Boragad expressed strong opposition to the proposed code.
That's on the next page, thank you.
Oh, you got that?
Yeah, it starts from John, okay. All right, perfect. And then, um, I guess, page four, the bottom, when we talk about the road use permit for material, material sand and stone. It says that, based on road condition assessment by PAR Engineering, isn't PAR, P-A-R-E?
P-A-R-E.
Okay, so can we change that? And then down in the motion, it also mentions PAR, so could we just change that to be corrected? And that's all I have. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended town council meeting minutes of June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, as amended.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Godd?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Thank you. And then discussion by council vote on other action on payment of bills. Anyone have any questions on the payment of bills?
So I have it, before there's any questions, just to make it clear. So there's obviously the remainder, not full remainder, because we're not done with the thirteenth period, but there's the FY twenty-five section and then FY twenty-six. I would look to have separate approvals on those, if possible. And then I had Marie add in the expenditure status report for FY twenty-five, not twenty-six, just because we're just starting twenty-six. But the following council meeting, we'll have, we'll start with FY twenty-six balances.
Okay.
So you're just looking for us to read off the separate totals?
Just, yeah, read off the, the one million, one point four million, and then the two point eight million separately, at the, on the bottom.
Okay, okay.
Um, sorry, does anyone have any questions?
I do, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Maybe the administrator can answer this, since the public works director is not here. If you go to the bottom of the pages, I don't remember, but anyway, you can't miss it. It's the big one, T. Miozy for seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yes.
All those roads that there were issues with, that's all squared away now?
That is correct, and they all been reviewed, inspected, and approved by PAR.
Okay, thanks. Yep, that was the only question I had.
Anyone else?
I think my only question, Tony, is that, you know, based on budget, we were reconciled up through the end of May. Are we still tracking with reconciliation?
Yeah, we're actually, first time in a while, we opened up the new fiscal year after being reconciled through June.
Excellent, perfect.
Yeah, so hopefully we can keep that momentum.
And now we're gonna be reconciled every month.
And I'm gonna ask that question.
Every month.
Keep me to it. I'm, I'm, we're, we're keeping that momentum.
It's just easier.
Oh, no, at a hundred percent, we, that's where we want to be, is, is reconciled monthly, but, you know.
I actually have a question, now that I see this. Item number seventy-three, Malloy Wildlife Nuisance Beaver Removal, removal, for four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Why is, what happened before I got here?
I'm turning my mic off.
I'm not a.
There, there is a beaver issue, and it, I don't know if that number has any, I don't think it has anything to do with, with the mechanic street issue.
So there's another beaver issue?
There was another issue of off of Mattity. That was a problem. But I don't think we've incurred any expenses as it relates to the mechanic street flooding. We're currently working on resolving that issue.
Okay. I mean, like, really, though, not to make light of it, and I obviously love animals. I have a whole farm.
You want some beavers?
No, I don't. Well, honestly, I would take the beavers, but you can't relocate beavers in Rhode Island. Before we move forward with just killing beavers, can we just look into diversion plans?
Yep, as I told you, this, today, when you came in, I've already spoken to the public works director about it, and we will look at that. And hopefully, we could find a solution. As the town administrator, I lean more on the rights of property owners and the beavers, though, and it's causing some serious property damage off of mechanic right now, and it's gotta be resolved. But we, it's gonna require a collaboration with, with Mr. Munchen. It's on his property. So we're, we're working carefully around this issue.
And I mean, I guess, once you, theoretically, if you were to kill the beavers, then they don't come back.
Well, we don't.
Well, no, that's a guarantee.
But so what I'm saying is, is that if this is an issue in town, then maybe a diversion plan is, is a better strategy than just having to kill beavers year-over-year.
It may be. I'm, I, I don't profess to be an expert on this issue, other than I know the damage they do. But, but Ray is looking at this to see if there's, the public works director is looking to see, looking at the diversion option as a possible way to mitigate.
But I assume that this item for nuisance beaver removal for four twenty-five was?
That's not mechanic street. I don't know what that's for. No, because we haven't.
And that's for the.
That's for Mattity.
Yeah, the Mattity Road. There was a, a big flooding problem that was happening up there, and a property owner removed a beaver dam.
Oh.
And it caused serious flooding.
Oh.
And that's what that was all about.
Okay.
So we had nothing to do. We have no blood on our hands on that beaver. It's, this is a whole new beaver family we're talking about here.
Let's just look at diversion plans instead of killing. Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of issues.
Oh, it's a horrible problem. It's not just in this town. It's a problem everywhere. And they're very destructive, you know. So I understand the sensitivity, I do, but I also understand when people's driveways are collapsing from flooding, that gets me a little bit anxious. So we'll, we'll find a solution. I will keep you definitely in the loop, councilwoman.
Thank you all for doing it.
I know you will.
Okay, so is that it for questions on payment of bills? Does someone like to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six payments?
I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five total payments in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, as well as total payments for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, what?
No, it's three ninety, right?
No, he said two point eight.
Two point eight million.
At the bottom.
Yeah, but two point eight is the total, right? Your twenty-five, twenty-six is only three hundred and ninety, isn't it?
No, three ninety plus the two point four above it. It's two point eight.
No, because the.
Yeah, because you have the library payment, the school department payment.
Can we debate?
Right, but, but two thousand twenty-five is just the three ninety, and then we have these payments, plus you have debt service and.
No, the, the FY twenty-six is, is two point eight million in itself, because you're approving.
You're approving the, uh, the, the library, the school, the fire, and the debt service. Uh, those are all the ACH payments for those. So there's the one point four million for FY twenty-five, and then there's the two point eight for FY twenty-six.
Like, as of July one?
As of July one, yeah. We have a lot that, a lot of, as you can see, that, we have a lot that we sign off right at the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, then why doesn't it say ACH payments in twenty-five, twenty-six? Because it looks like all your total ACH payments are two point four, and then your invoice is in twenty-five, twenty-six is three ninety.
Yeah, actually, and the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five numbers don't line up at the bottom.
Right, do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So, yeah. There's definitely something.
But we don't have those line items for library, school, fire, and debt service, and?
And the ACH, those are separate.
So it looks like two point eight might be the total, but we don't know what the total twenty-five, twenty-six number is.
Would you guys like the different, would you guys like to prove them separately? And I can give you the FY twenty-six number?
Yeah, is that what you wanted?
Yeah, that, if we could do that, yeah. I thought I had, had it.
That's okay. So, yeah, you can give us the total twenty-four, twenty-five number, and then the total twenty-five, twenty-six, and then they should, they should match the two point eight, right?
Yeah, yeah. So FY twenty-five is still the one point four million, and then FY twenty-six is one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay.
Okay, so to confirm, one million, three hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
One million, three hundred and ninety-eight.
Three ninety-eight, got it. Okay.
Sorry about that.
I will make a motion to approve total payments for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Godd?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Tony, do you want that amended to have the total amount, or are you good with just the two?
Yeah, the two is my idea.
Okay.
I just wanted to just open it in the minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash C, maximum of three minutes per person. Did anyone want to speak in open forum? I'll ask again, anyone want to speak? All right. Next one is executive session, closed session, is discussion by council vote on other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, Dudley Development Corp versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity of tax assessor for the town of Nussman Field, case number PC two, two zero two two dash five zero six four. Two, Dudley Development Corp versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity of tax assessor for the town of Nussman Field, case number PC two zero two five dash one three oh five. And Jose Garcia Junior and Alina S. Garcia versus Nussman Field Zoning Board of Review, Jen Drew Investments LLC and Manuela Garza, CA, number PC two oh two five dash oh three one oh five. And B, discussion by council vote on other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law two dash forty-six dash five A five. Any discussion or considerations related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held. or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public for potential acquisition of land?
Madam President, just a typo. The reference to the statute is RIGLI 42-46-5A-
Yeah, I thought, I was like, that doesn't look right. Okay, so 42-46-5A5. Anyone like to make a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to return to executive, uh, open session, indicate that two votes were taken and request that the minutes are sealed.
Right.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escasia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.
And that would be that same motion, it would be the motion I mentioned, that it would be a motion to authorize the town solicitor to retain legal counsel to represent the town's interest at the municipal rate of $150 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. House.
Yes. Do I have to do the open session?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, next item is open session discussion by council vote other action regarding assigning legal counsel to represent the zoning board review in the matter entitled Jose Garcia Jr. and Alina Escia versus NOSPIVIL Zoning Board Review, Gendro Investments LLC in Manuela, Gaza, case number PC 2025-03105.